Hi, we follow the meeting in order with the pleasure of ladies. Pleasure ladies.
Well, good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Green Castle School Board. First item on the agenda tonight is adjustments to the agenda, Mr. Gibbity.
Yeah, so we just have an addition to the personnel report. It came in at the last minute. Mrs. Courtney Dickey is requesting a leave of absence for the rest of the school year.
Can I get a motion to approve that adjustment to the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item is public comments regarding agenda items. Are there any comments regarding? Hearing none. Next item is recognitions. Mr. Gibbity.
So, Ms. Johnson, would you like to begin?
Usually he knows exactly what I'm gonna do. Redpath is nominating Michael Knuth, a current first grader in Heather Miller's classroom. He is nominated because of his generous heart and thinking of others. Michael took cookie dough from our fall fundraiser and encouraged his mom to deliver it to beyond homeless, so families that live there can experience the fun of cookie making too. Michael realized families that live there don't have the opportunity to do the things like he does, make cookies, experiment in the kitchen, and other typical experiences that we all take for granted. Michael, I want to thank you for your kindness and for showing me the meaning of the season, so congratulations.
I'd like to introduce you to Tatum Shadwell. Tatum is a second grader in Mrs. Rivel's classroom, and he is our November Student of the Month. Mrs. Rivel writes, "Tatum Shadwell was the first student to come to mind when deciding on November Student of the Month. There are many compliments I could give Tatum to show how deserving he is of this award. Tatum is one of the most thoughtful kids I've ever known. He likes to talk to me every day while I'm on recess duty and share everything he did not before, but he always asks me about my evening too. He is genuinely interested in my life and even follows up with things I told him on a previous day. One time, he asked me about a headache from a previous day that even I had forgotten about. He not only listens, but he cares too. Last week, I told him I had a big list of things to do after school, and he offered to send his mom to do my Walmart pickup for me." "Tatum's effort at school is something I admire about him. He tries hard with everything he does, and he keeps a positive attitude while doing it. He is not afraid to ask for help when he needs it, and he will correct work if needed. Tatum also is a caring friend to his classmates. He will be the first person to help an injured student at recess or report the injury to me. He shows empathy for his friends who are upset. Tatum is the kind of friend who will stop what he's playing or working on to comfort an upset friend. I can't say enough good things about Tatum, and he brings such joy to our classroom. I'm proud to have him as a student." Mrs. Rivel.
Alright, so I am proud to present Ms. Haley Baker as TZ's Student of the Month. Haley is a fourth grader in Mrs. Lakin's fourth grade class. Mrs. Lakin says Haley is one of the kindest, sweetest, most caring, and friendliest people that she knows. She brings joy into every room she enters and always has something positive and uplifting to say. She encourages others daily and celebrates their successes. She does her best on her schoolwork, asks for help when needed, and offers to help others. Haley is pure joy to be around, and I am so thankful she is in my class. I would also like to add from myself and from the office that we also love Haley, as she brings a smile to everybody she meets. She's the first to give a hug off the bus and is always a hello in the office right around lunchtime when she peeks in every day, right? So, she has overcome many hurdles in her life, and she is just a great example of what a student of the month should be, so TZ is very happy for Haley.
Good evening. Our Green Castle Middle School Student of the Month is Jackson Rogers. He is not here yet because they have basketball practice, so he's getting cleaned up. He should be here in a minute, but he texted me because that's who he is. The character trait of the month was leadership, and this is what two of his teachers said. "Jackson is a student that is always willing to fill a leadership role. He is detailed, organized, and eager to help guide others." Another teacher commented that in her class, while she was out for a few days, Jackson was willing to lead the class and work individually with students. While the topic was all new to them, she knew that Jackson would be serious about completing tasks and willing to guide others. It was very impressive as the students made progress while she was gone. So, Jackson Rogers.
So I think we're correct to assume then that with Jackson running late, that Mr. Rogers is running late, so we will recognize our high school student of the month as soon as he arrives.
Okay, guess we can move on for a minute then. And next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Going down the line of the consent agenda, do we have any questions or comments about the monthly, or the meeting minutes from November 23rd, 2020, a work session? Or 2000, November 23rd, 2020, the regular board meeting minutes? Does anyone have any questions or comments about the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next item in the consent agenda is allowance of claims, Mrs. Romer.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
First in your finance packet, you're gonna see the payrolls for November 2020. There were two regular payrolls in November. We also had a mini payroll. There was someone that didn't quite get the pay they needed, so we did a mini payroll to get that person their funds in a timely manner. The first payroll in November was 11/6/2020 for a total payroll of $441,952.07. Along with that payroll came the accounts payable, again for FICA payroll taxes, retirement. Total accounts payable for the November 6th payroll, $124,0873.21. Second regular payroll in November was dated 11/20 for a total payroll of $433,093.15. Along with that payroll came the accounts payable, again for payroll taxes and retirement. Total accounts payable for the 11/20 payroll, $123,721.11. The mini payroll that I spoke of was dated the following Monday, 11/23/20. That total payroll was $272.21. And along with that payroll came just some FICA taxes for payroll taxes, or FICA for payroll taxes, for a total accounts payable on the mini payroll of $11/23/20, $41.66. Did anyone have any questions about the payrolls?
No.
Okay, we'll go ahead and we'll move on to prepays. We've got prepays dated November 1st through November 30th. Total prepays dated November 30th, $323,828.98. Nothing unusual, just the usual suspects with the biggest expense being health insurance to the trust.
Callie?
Yes.
What's the Wayne Township thing on here?
Yep, actually, the reason why this probably threw you off a little bit this month, I normally label those garnishments, and I just did employee deductions on all of the memos on those. It's a little bit easier for us when we're doing history searches, but anything that you see a Putnam County Clerk, Wayne Township Small Claims Clerk of Hendricks County, and in some cases, Indiana Department of Workforce, those are all garnishments, employee garnishments. When those are sent to the schools, we need to honor those and do those proper garnishments until their debt's paid in full. But that particular one would be for a garnishment for an employee. Okay? You're welcome. And next in your packet, you're gonna see a list of claims dated today, December 14th, 2020. Did anyone have any questions in particular about a certain claim?
I had a question about claim 1215. This might be more of a Jeff question, just it's the moisture management.
Sure.
Yeah, so, excuse me, so we contract with moisture management. They did some tuck point repair and some through flashing, basically to keep the water out.
Mr. Cox is about to answer your question? Okay. Anyone else have a question about regular claims dated today? We've got total claims dated today, December 14th, $164,588.67. Ready to move on to the fund report? Okay. Next in your packet, you should see the fund report. These would be ending balances for November 30th, 2020. Education fund balance, $1,056,080.96. And we'll go down a couple lines to operations. Total balance, November 30th, 2020, $695,778.11. And the next line down, we'll look at rainy day today. Total balance, the end of November, $1,00647.726. The last page of your fund report. Total balance for all funds is, if I can get there, If you want to take a look at the depository statement for November 20th, you'll see the bank balances at the end of November. Total, $5,329,684.76. Next line, you'll see the outstanding checks that have yet to clear the bank. And then you'll see an outstanding deposit for one set. Total balance for all funds, end of November 30th, 2020, $5,139,719.69. If you go back to the last line of your fund report, you'll see that those two items match. I'd like to submit all for approval.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The last two items on the consent agenda are personnel report part one and personnel report part two, which are posted on the website and on the door at the central office, in case anyone was curious to see those reports. That brings us to the end of the consent agenda, so can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? I'll move. Here we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And I believe we are back to recognitions.
Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, I apologize. As dad, I kinda overestimated how I could pick up my son, 6:30, who also needed to be here, and do this, so I apologize for that. So, this one is really cool, and I'm glad I get to be here. We had a game that got canceled today, and I really didn't want to miss reading this one. So, our trait with citizenship in the high school, and Mrs. Diana Meyer, she's also our student council teacher, and I don't know if you guys know about this one, but they organize Thanksgiving meal boxes, and she's the one that did this. One of the cool things about high school is you kinda just like let these students go. And so, Mrs. Meyer said that Lauren Hopper embodied citizenship this month by seeing a need in her community and acting to help. She recognized that as humans, we have the opportunity to help our neighbors in times of need and stepped out and found a way to bless others. In other words, this is not something we've normally done. This was just kind of an idea from she and her classmates. She was the driving force behind our Thanksgiving meal boxes, and as a result of her hard work, 40 GCSE families were given an entire Thanksgiving meal. And by meal, bird and rolls, and what else? I mean, like, what, pie? I mean, like, it was entire meals, 40 of them, and so with that, she's our student of the month.
Congratulations.
And again, thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. If I could have, well, here he is, Jackson. So, at Green Castle Middle School, our character trait of the month was leadership, and Jackson Rogers was nominated by his teachers for that. Here are two statements that teachers made about Jackson. First, "Jackson is a student that is always willing to fill a leadership role. He is detailed, organized, and eager to help guide others." In addition, another teacher wrote in her class, "While she was out of school for a few days, Jackson was willing to lead the class and work individually with students while the assignment was all new to them, but she knew that Jackson would be serious about completing the tasks and willing to help guide others." She said it was very impressive. The students made a lot of progress while she was gone. So, Green Castle Middle School would like to recognize Jackson Rogers.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is reports. The superintendent report.
Yep, so just a couple of brief updates this month. It was asked at our last board meeting about how many families we've impacted thus far with our GEAR grant. Excuse me, and to date, 92 families, 47 through Comcast or Xfinity, and 45 with Verizon Hotspots, so we still have opportunities to impact even more families. So, we just need to continue to get the good word out so that we can use those dollars to support our families. While we have been on a hybrid schedule at the middle school and the high school, I'd like to thank Mrs. Carrico and the Food Services Department. We have, they have continued to provide free meals for students in the middle school and high school, and so they've been timing it up and scheduling it to where students will receive breakfast and lunch for three days, the three days that they're not here. So that's certainly been a need, and that's a nice thing that we can continue to do to support our families. We are still waiting on our 1782 budget, budget order from the Department of Local Government Finance. We expect that to arrive hopefully any day now, hopefully before we leave. So, we are obviously awaiting that and planning to work with that to finalize our 2021 budget. We had another good meeting today with the core planning team and looking at our facility master planning, our building study that is taking place with KRM. So, one of the main things that we're doing with that is working through a potential site map, a long-range site map for our campus, making sure that in any work or any construction that ultimately we believe or is recommended to move forwards with, making sure future projects, or it doesn't conflict with any potential future projects. So they're still studying our facilities, studying costs, and so we hope to have a completed report at some point in January, at the beginning of January. So, that work is ongoing and certainly exciting. We did have the community input session or participation, both in person and also virtually, prior to the November board meeting. So, just excited again to kind of move forwards with kind of the draft plan or plan of that. We are meeting with admin team, administrators, and GC TA this week to discuss second semester, discuss our instructional model, our learning plan. Certainly, we're gonna review, you know, the pros and cons of what's taken place, any changes that need to be potentially made. It's my goal to announce our plan for starting second semester by December 30th, at least, if not, excuse me, by December 30th, if not this week, so that way families have enough time to plan. The reason December 30th is the state updates their data, their dashboard. The county updates their metrics on Wednesday. So, we just want to make sure that we're making a good, informed decision, and at the same time that we don't overreact. But we do have plans to obviously get information out and share that obviously with families and, you know, and staff, because staff will also obviously have to plan for whatever option. But appreciate the patience and cooperation of our families and of our staff. Nothing's been easy this year, but everyone's been willing and flexible to just continue to meet the needs of our kids. And that's all we can do in this situation, and that's what we'll continue to do moving forwards. Last item before we go into our other stuff is just hope that everyone has a safe and happy holiday, because obviously, the end of this week is the end of our first semester here at Green Castle Schools. And so, hopefully, families are able to stay safe and well, but also able to enjoy each other's company the best they can.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is old business, and we have no old business, so which moves us to new business. And the first item is an approval request for permission to pay late-arriving 2020 invoices.
Yeah, so as is customary, at the end of the year, we're finalizing or wrapping up the 2020 financial year. We want to make sure that any invoices that we receive after tonight's board meeting that are in the year 2020 are paid with budgeted dollars from 2020. And then a follow-up report will be provided at the January meeting.
I can motion to approve. I can motion to be approved.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, or next item is an approval request for the 2021-2022 membership renewal bids with West in the cooperative.
Yeah, so Mrs. Carrico is putting forth this recommendation, and what this is, is it is a cooperative purchasing program for food services. By pooling resources, they're able to get more competitive prices at a reduced cost. So, I recommend that the board approve this agreement for '21 and '22.
Basically, this just gets us more purchasing power, right?
Correct, yeah. Pool our resources with other school districts and corporations.
I make the motion to approve?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Next is an approval request for a resolution to authorization to sign agreements for alternative services in private residential school placements.
Yeah, so, this is a grant that's a result of excess cost for a student that is placed, as it says, in private residential school placement and currently in order to, or, excuse me, currently the board president is the one authorized to sign this. So this resolution would allow me to handle signing this. So this resolution would allow me to handle signing this grant in agreement in the future as is customary with the other agreements. So it's my recommendation that board approve this so that we can file with the Department of Education.
I approve. Make motion.
Yeah, I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is an approval request for about six donations. I think we can just go ahead and approve all of these at once. We have a donation from, or to the Greencastle Middle School from Greencastle Middle School PTO to Greencastle Middle School in the name or in the amount of $1,300. We have a donation from the Gary and Linda Huber Fund for Cultural Arts and Learning to Greencastle High School Art Department in the amount of $500. We have a donation for the Putnam County Found, Community Foundation to the Greencastle High School in the amount of $500. We have a donation from Putnam County Community Foundation to Greencastle Middle School for $500. And we have a donation to the Putnam County, from the Putnam County Community Foundation to Redpath Primary in the amount of $500. And lastly, we have a donation from Walmart Distribution Center to Redpath Primary in the amount of $1,535.58. This is always the easiest part of the evening is taking money. So can I get a motion to approve?
I'd like to motion.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is other business and I have a couple of items that I'd like to bring up. One, I think it's noteworthy to recognize, or noteworthy to mention that Mr. Michael Tuzanikas passed away a couple of weeks ago. He's obviously who our school is named after, the intermediate school. And for those who knew Mr. Tuzanikas, I think goes, everyone will, will agree that he's a pretty instrumental guy in Greencastle school history. He was my principal for seven years at that school and still kept in touch with him periodically and he was a great guy and just gets worth mentioning. It's kind of funny, I was explaining to my wife that that school is pushing 60 years old and Jennifer Rhodes is the fourth principal that that building has had, which is pretty So I just thought I would bring that up and share for anyone who did not know that. The second thing, it kind of ties into this a little bit. I'd had a conversation about a month ago with Mr. Gibbony and, and have since been approached by a couple of people about the same thing, asking me if I thought the board would be willing to or interested in dedicating the new transportation center to Dan Green, maybe to Dan Green Transportation Center or whatever we choose to name it, just in his honor, memory for all the time that he spent with Greencastle Schools and how dedicated he was and how instrumental he was in building that facility. So I just wanted to bring that up and really not ask you for any action, but I just thought I'd bring that up for the board to consider and possibly do something like that this period if we decide to do something like that. I think 38 years.
32.
32.
32 years.
A long time.
And there seems to be a precedent for doing that for people that have had long-term positive interaction with us.
There is. So that's really, I mean, nothing we need to act on tonight, you know, just something to bring up for everyone to consider. So that is my other business of the evening. Does anyone else have any?
Jeff, I just wanted to say, whenever, whatever decision you guys make on students, it's perfectly fine, but I will say it's been really nice and I've gotten a lot of positive feedback on having the elementary kids in the school buildings. I think that was really a, a good plan, even when we had to go to hybrid on the older kids. Thanks for doing that.
Anyone else?
Yeah, as we're, as we're getting ready to wrap up the first semester, I just want to, you know, I know Mr. Gibbony's already, already said a thank you, but I just want to give a thank you to just all the, all the teachers and the staff and just, just everybody. And I mean, I don't, not in the classroom or in the school or anything like that, but I know it's, I know it's tough and, and, you know, I've got a student myself and so you, you guys are greatly, greatly appreciated. I know it's a tough, tough time. And so as we look forward, you know, just, just, I know everything will just continue to be as, the effort will just, just be the same going into the, the next semester, but you guys really are appreciated how we started off and then how we've, we've continued through some tough times. So, so I just personally, as a parent and a community member, want to thank you all.
I would agree.
Anyone else? Okay, last item on the agenda is adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
And we have a motion and a second, it's all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes.
Thanks everybody.
Yes, thank you. Have a good holiday, have a good break, and we will see you in a month. Thank you.